Good evening, everybody. I'd like to bring the April 16, 2019 Rockwell Center Board of Education meeting to order. Could everybody rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to, in case of an emergency, the exits are at the back of the room. If you can exit out the building and follow the signs to the other doors that will lead you outside. Any and all correspondence that can be posted are posted on the table out in the hallway. And we are up to items for information. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to turn this right over to Dr. Leahy, if you wouldn't mind doing the introductions and getting this started, please. We are very pleased that we have the Coalition for Youth here tonight. And, Dr. Leahy, please.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Yes, the topic of the Rockwell Center Coalition has been on the Board of Ed agenda several times, and for good reason. We talked about its formation, its relationship with the district, why we got involved with them, how they help us with presentations, fairs, and whatnot. But tonight, we're here to talk to you about a very specific mission of the Coalition, and that is its work toward, to fight the legalization of marijuana in New York State. There is a bottom line to what we do in the district, and that is that we educate, right? And we have to have kids ready to be educated. And that means mind, body, emotions, they have to be ready to be present to learn. So we have a great and robust athletic program that keeps them physically fit. We have a very, very strong social-emotional learning program that addresses social-emotional learning needs, in addition to, of course, our great academics. But a child's not going to learn chemistry and English if they're not mentally and physically ready to do so. So, mental health is a major concern, obviously, and it's the, really paramount for readiness for learning. There's a $64,000 question that's been posed by psychologists and mental health professionals for many years, and that's this: Do students, or do people in general, use substance substances to self-medicate when they are in distress? Or, does the use of substances cause mood disorders? And this question has been kind of battled back and forth for many years. If you read the DSM-IV, there's actually two competing diagnoses, right, that talk about this. And so you can make arguments either way. But whether or not, whether or not a, someone is, wants to smoke marijuana, or drink or use substances, is ultimately a personal choice. And whether or not we legalize marijuana is a political decision. However, whether or not marijuana affects the brain of a developing adolescent or student is a scientific question with a very hard yes or no answer. And recent studies in brain research have told us unequivocally that it does. And so that's what everyone has to stop and listen to. There's a lot of rhetoric about medicinal marijuana versus non-medicinal recreational marijuana. There's rhetoric about, there's an argument about social justice, and that the reason, and that's under that guise, there's been a lot of push for legalization, at the very least decriminalization. But even that has real holes in it. We had Dr. Dewey here just about a month ago, and he showed us very clearly on his brain mapping what, what happens to the brain when a student, a child, and then adolescent is becoming addicted to substances. And anyone that was there, I'm sure, came away as frightened as I did, or at least as made aware of things that I certainly didn't know before. And that heightened awareness is what we have to continue to have ever present in our minds when we're talking about trying to guide our kids away from the use of substances. I wish I had two hours to talk to you about some of the recent findings and the recent studies that I've read about recently. But suffice to say that the marijuana that the kids are smoking right now, or the adults are smoking, is not the marijuana of the 1960s. We're being sold kind of a bill of goods about its connection with medicinal purposes as well. The prolegalization and profit marijuana lobby is active and strong, and really is pushing very hard to convince a somewhat ignorant American public that this is okay. Fortunately, we have the strength and tenacity of a coalition that's really done an incredible job to stop that. About three or four months ago now, we sat together, members of the Coalition and some local representatives, political representatives' office, and I kind of walked away very defeated. I said, "This sounds like a fait accompli." The politicians must have said to us, "It's going to happen, so let's just make it happen as best as we can." But we didn't really take that as a final answer. And I use the pronoun "we" because I proudly associate myself with these two women that are here tonight. But truthfully, the work of our project manager, Coalition Project Manager Ruth Ann McCormick, and Liz Boylan, who's a very active member of the Coalition, have really led all of us in this fight against the legalization of marijuana in New York. So I asked them to come here tonight to talk specifically about what the Coalition has done to fight the legalization of marijuana, how we feel very strongly that this has a direct harmful impact on our children, our students, and the community, and how we are going to continue this fight. Ruth Ann?
Thank you, Noreen. Liz is going to pass out some informational packets to the members of the board that I'd like to go over with you as I'm speaking about what the Coalition has done. We started this, really, last school year. At our last few Coalition meetings, Liz was actually our strongest advocate and encouraged everyone to speak out against it. And there wasn't much news about it then, but once the summer came and went, and the governor decided to hold listening sessions, three listening sessions, we were the, we were there. So we went to the first one at Hofstra, which was interesting. The marijuana industry actually had people fly in from states that are legalized to actually talk about how good it is for their state. These people were not the type of people I would want anyone in my family or any of my friends associated with. In fact, we stayed far away from them because when we got up to speak in opposition, they heckled us and they interrupted us. They were very rude. They were told to be quiet more than one occasion. So they really, you could see where they're coming from, and you could see that their, their brain was not really thinking in a logical way. So as we go through the packet, I want to go over the table of contents. The first one is the New York State update. So what we did is we updated the board about what our next steps are going to be, and what New York State is planning to do before the end of the legislative session. Then we have what Nassau County has done. So Nassau County had held public hearings. The first one on February 2, when we were not here, Liz and I were in Washington, meeting with the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, where we got a chance to speak to our representatives on Capitol Hill and actually tell them our concerns about the legalization and the effects on the youth, and the dangers that this would have on our youth. So that was, we got a lot of positive feedback. We did get promises from our representatives that they would call our state representatives and explain to them how detrimental this would be for our state. Next, we have the, the public hearing, which is going on the day after Easter. Now, this is a public hearing that Nassau County is having to approve the opt-out bill that they have drafted. And it's important for members of our community to attend this and to speak in, to be proactive about this, and actually to have our youth talk about this. What they did was great. We went to meetings personally with Howard Capel and Josh LaFazin, who was in charge of running the listening sessions with Commissioner Ryder. Noreen spoke at most of them, along with other members of the Coalition, and members of our Coalition who are in recovery, such as Stephen Dodge. His mom spoke, and what she said was that she was just fearful of the future of her grandchildren. She knows what it's like to have three members of her family living in recovery, and she did not want any more influence as far as legal drugs on the future of her grandchildren. So that was important. And everyone listened to us. We went up to Albany about a month before the vote, and we had a press conference with Smart Approaches to Marijuana, who are the group that is educating everyone across the country about the dangers of this and what it will do to your states. And they had these props that they gave us. It actually looked like a Marlboro box, and it had all the, the data on what marijuana does to youth. It actually has shown to lower youth's IQ by eight points, which is a huge, you know, lowering of IQ point. You do not want to have anything that would put our youth at risk, that would do that to them. And our youth are already vaping marijuana at a very high, high rates. I actually testified in front of the FDA in December, when they were deciding that all of the Juul flavors were going to be pulled from the shelves. Juul did say they would. It's not a federal law, so a lot of the shops in Rockwell Center still sell the flavors. And I've gone to all of them. Actually, on Saturday, I was walking around town, and about five places still have every flavor that are attracted to the youth. And I said to them, "You know, just for the safety of our youth, pull them from the shelves." I know the police made a compliance check at the soda shop on Maple Avenue and North Forest, right by the Village Green, and that owner was, was getting a fine and was going to have to go to court because he did sell to minors. And he's been doing it for a long time, so hopefully, he will pull all the Juuls from his store. So I just want to thank the board for everything, and for your support, and for Noreen for her support, and for Liz, who was one of our strongest advocates. We're not allowed to lobby as a coalition funded under a federal grant, but we're allowed to advocate, and we're allowed to educate. And we are also allowed to teach our community how to do the same along with us. We have many community members that have spoken out in, you know, that have really supported us in our fight for this. And we're not going to stop. I know the legislature is going to try to do this before the end of the session. We're going up to Albany again. The senators speak to us. We actually connected with the NAACP in Freeport. They did not realize what was in the bill and how the, the new law was going to target the minority communities by allowing convicted felons to be the first people to get a permit to open up a marijuana retail establishment. I don't think many people knew that was in the bill. I don't think many people know that if a baby is born with tested positive for THC, that there's no action that can be brought upon the mother. People in Colorado, or actually pregnant women, are smoking marijuana. And it is, we don't know what it's going to do to the unborn. I mean, there's not enough testing done. They're going to have to start testing. And it's just, the law is bad for our youth. It's bad for the future of our community, and it's just bad for public health all around. And as far as medicating mental illness with marijuana and other drugs, we have a member of St. Agnes Cathedral Parish, whose son suffered from mental illness and decided to medicate with marijuana instead of taking his prescribed medications, and that ended very sadly for her as he killed himself in their home two years ago. And she's one of the strongest advocates that speaks out against this too, because many people feel that if it's legal, they're just going to smoke marijuana instead of taking their prescribed medications, which is not wise and not a smart thing for people to do that have a mental illness. And also, we need to recognize that mental illness is really affecting our youth. Another sad story yesterday, a youth in Jericho, seventeen-year-old succumbed to suicide, which I was so upset to hear about. And, you know, we just need to protect our youth as best we can and speak out. Every day, send your legislators and your senators and your Assembly people a little blurb about what marijuana does to youth. I just, I have a list. I can send everyone with all the emails. It's easy. And everyone in our Coalition is doing that. Every day, just send a short fact of what it's done in Colorado, how fatalities are up 134 percent, driving accidents in Colorado since it's been legalized. So it's something that we all need to recognize and to pay attention to. It's not over. Hopefully, if the session ends without it being legalized, we have a little bit more time to strategize what we're going to do after the next election. So thank you for your time.
Ruth Ann? Ruth Ann? How can people get in touch with you? Do you have a?
Well, I did have a PowerPoint that I was going to put up. I have cards, so I can give them out. We have a website. Noreen, I think there's a link on the school website?
There is.
There is.
If you just wanted to just say your website, so if anybody?
Yeah, go to the web, oh. It's the rvccoalitionforyouth.org. And I, I also work with the court, with Judge Crozier, on a program that we started two years ago with Detective DeLuca, where if a youth is found with an alcohol summons or a social host summons, they get recommended to the Coalition for 12 hours of community service. And it really is a great opportunity for these kids. And, you know, they, they really enjoy coming to our meetings and helping us with all our initiatives. So if it happens, it's not the end of the world. It's actually probably the start of something good, to stop the behavior that got them there. Thank you.
Ruth Ann, when is your next meeting, and where do you hold your meetings?
It's March, the second Monday in March?
May.
In May, sorry.
And where are your meetings?
It's in the Commons Room, right here.
Right here. So if anyone would like to participate, we, the more the merrier. We really have a lot to do, and we would love your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Okay, I will just reiterate what Dr. Leahy said. My understanding early, or some part of last year, was that the marijuana legalization bill was going through, end of statement. It was just, don't even stop fighting it. And we've been talking about it. We've talked to our legislators. And I actually, we, Mr. O'Shea made mention of it at our last meeting, thanking our legislators for sort of putting the brakes on and not pushing it through, not attaching the legalization to our budget bill. I bumped into one of our legislators and thanked them, and they really said that a lot of the reasons for it slowing down were people like you showing up and saying, "Wait a second, there's another side. They're only hearing from the, we want the money side." So I think it is truly important to continue to speak to our legislators because they need to hear the side that we don't want this, that, that there's no amount of money that will make this worthwhile, that our children are too important. So thank you for all the work that you do.
I just echo what Liz says. We met with the legislators, and they were all like, "It's done." It polled, polled higher than 50 percent. That's where we're going. It's going to vote. And thank you to your efforts and the efforts of other people who fought the battle and took the time to fight the battle. You, you made them think twice about it, and hopefully, they'll keep thinking, and hopefully, they'll do the right thing in the end, so. Thank you very much.
John, if I could just add one thing. It's not over. The legislator, right, just now that the, the governor's budget or the, the state budget has been passed, the legislative session has not ended until June. And so what he did was to shift from his budget to the legislative calendar, consideration of this legalization of marijuana. So it is not over, and there is still ongoing discussion, and our voices still continue to, must be heard in order to, in fact, push this off. I'm not sure for how long we can, because our legislators continue to tell us that there is a vast majority of people out there who are very supportive of this. I don't know who they are. I don't meet a whole lot of them. I know that most of our organizations, ours in Nassau County, our state association, I know that most of the, the parent associations in the state have come out very strongly in opposition to it. But our voices still must continue to be heard. Any opportunity that we have, we should take advantage of it and continue to meet with our legislators and make sure that they understand this is not okay.
Doing for May 31st.
Pardon me?
Doing for May 31st. They can hear from everyone.
Okay, yep.
And the list of oppositions included in your package will be posted in Nassau County Gas Force Report. There's a link to that. It gives you all the oppositions. It's 90 percent the first one opposition, 90 percent the second, 8 percent the third. So I don't know where they're getting the majority of, and they are, the pot industry is very well-funded. So, and a normal person, you know, in your natural lives, who's really paying attention until it's too late?
Until it's too late. Is, is your packet on your website?
It's up there.
The information in the packet, so that would give you all the contact information to our legislators?
And the fact that you have? They need Noreen to send it around home to everyone. Send it to the school.
But the New York State PTA came out against it, the Catholic Conference came out against it, the Nassau Superintendent's Council came out against it.
Black educators.
Black educators in Freeport came out against it. So there's, there's a lot of groups, the village officials, both Nassau County and Southern County came out against it. It's in your, in your packet. So when they ask the question, do you support it, you know, I don't think people realize it's going to be on every corner, every street corner. The bill, the Senate bill that's being circulated, it says that there's no, you can't use pot in school buildings while children are around. So what does that mean? There's a lot of stuff in that bill that goes beyond just sales. So I would say definitely call the legislators and express your concern about our youth, because they really are our leaders today. They need, they need to know what the right thing is. And Noreen has been a steward, a champion, to see what's going to happen.
Thank you both. Thank you so much. Thank you, Noreen. All right. We can now reach our fun topic.
Yes, I'm going to turn.
Preliminary budget hearing.
Yes. Mr. Bartel, you have guided us through this entire process from beginning to hopefully an end tonight. And we're going to turn it over to you again tonight to provide us with a summary. Just so long as everybody understands the entire process, I, there are some people here that we don't see on a regular basis who have not lived with us throughout the entire budgeting process. Tonight, we have something called the preliminary budget hearing. We had to put that in place only because it's the last opportunity for this Board of Education to take action, to make a modification to what the bottom line might be on our expenditure plan for next year. There is a hearing that is set up in May by the state that is required of us. At that point in time, we can make no changes, even though it is a, a legal hearing date. You would think that at a hearing, there would be an opportunity for people to express their views, give the board an opportunity to listen to what they had to say, and make modifications. That's not the case. This is the last opportunity for that to happen. And so we turn the original summary, although there's been a lot of time that we've taken in the development of this expenditure plan for next year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bartel to ask him to summarize it, and then hopefully we will have some discussion and come to closure on that so we can have a budget by the end of the evening. Mr. Bartels?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. One of the reasons we have to finalize the budget today is we have to adopt the property tax report card, which we'll do later tonight, and I'll talk a little bit about that after our discussion. That's something that's required to be filed with the State Education Department by April 29. So that's really the reason why this is the last chance to make a change to the budget. Also, I wanted to start with a kind of a public service announcement. The state has again changed the STAR program and have thrown another monkey wrench into it. So what's going to be happening beginning next year is that the STAR amounts will not change going forward if they stay on your tax bills. However, you can apply for a STAR tax credit, and that would then allow your STAR rebate to increase, but it would no longer be on your tax bill. So you'll have to pay your full tax bill without the STAR exemption, and then get a rebate check for the STAR credit. So this is something that they're doing for all homeowners who currently have the STAR exemption. They are not accepting any new STAR exemptions, so if anybody applies for one in the future, changes homes, or so forth, they'll be required to file an application with the state for a STAR credit. They will no longer get the STAR exemption. Also, if your income is more than $250,000, you are required to switch to the STAR credit. You will not get a STAR exemption, even if you have one in place right now. So this is obviously going to throw more fuel on the issues of the assessments and how people's taxes change. Individuals, beginning not with these tax bills, but with the next year's tax bills, are going to further complicate us trying to explain how the increases take place. So if they pull out your STAR exemption, which is currently about $1,300, that's going to be an increase of $1,300 in your tax bill, that you, then you're going to have to worry about getting a rebate check from the state for it. So we'll post this information on our website with some links as to where you need to go to file for those changes. But just remember, if you leave the, if you have an exemption now and you leave it where it is, it's not going to increase for the future. If you change it and get the STAR credit, it will be able to increase by 2% each year. So that's just a little public service announcement. Getting back to the budget, we had a couple of items that we had some questions on at the last meeting. One of them had to do with instructional support at Watson, when we were looking at the staffing in the different buildings. So we were thinking about increasing, one of, we have a half-time AIS teacher at Watson. We were thinking about increasing that to a full-time teacher to try to equate the inequity in the instructional support for AIS. However, we may, and this is due to, we're reducing teaching assistance at all of our elementary schools, one for each elementary school, two from Watson. So again, looking at the overall staffing picture for AIS, it looked like Watson was down a little bit. So we're talking about an increase of a half-time teacher. The other option there would be to allow Watson to keep their two teaching assistants. So we would not increase the teaching support, but to increase, but to not cut the teaching assistance. So either way, it would kind of be a wash as far as the expense. Those increases would be supported, we had with the enrollments and review of students who are going to be going into the Pathways Program, we're actually going to be down to teaching assistants at the high school. So that would account for any increase, because we can't really increase the budget without having an offsetting expense reduction or revenue increase. So because we had those two changes at the high school, that would be the money that would be used to support that increase at Watson. The other piece we had that we talked about was counseling at the elementary level. We talked about possibly having either a social worker or a guidance counselor to provide some additional support. In looking at our state aid revenue projections, we feel we can increase those. We did get a little bit more through the governor's budget. So we feel we can increase our state aid revenue projection by about $100,000 to cover the cost of one individual. So that would be either a counselor or a social worker. I think that's still in discussion.
Where, what, where are we with, what's our thought process as we, as we talk about?
At the last meeting, one of the things that I, that we had discussed, I, I had indicated to the Board of Education that we would go back to the drawing board and take a look at this whole issue with regard to providing counseling services for, to deal with mental health issues. Look, there, there are two things happening now that are on parallel lines and that affect the elementary building. One has to do with the mental health curriculum and the implementation of a variety of things related to mental health for all of our youth as they're growing up. And the, the second has to do with a guidance plan that we have to put into place that's mandated by the state, which requires of us to put together, for all of our children in the elementary grade, a guidance plan. They look almost somewhat the same, and they certainly overlap considerably. So the ambivalence that we had expressed the last time that we were together really had to do with whether or not we needed to have either a social worker or a guidance person. What we did was go back and take a look at the credentialing associated with both social workers and guidance counselors, and asked the question, which of these two could provide us the most value added for the school district at this time in order to do as much as we possibly could for our children in the elementary building? Given the, given the nature of what the state is requiring of us, and taking a look at the credentials that, and, and the training that is provided to both our social workers and to our guidance people, who, by the way, when they, when they become a guidance counselor, are required to embark on a sixty-credit master's program. And so at the end of that preparation program, one of the things that, it was not totally surprising to me, but certainly was somewhat surprising, was the amount of time that is spent in that program on preparing them for counseling children, on child development, adolescent development, and then responding to problems that they have as, as, from counseling. So what we did was surprising to me, but certainly was somewhat surprising, was the amount of time that is spent in that program on preparing them for counseling children, on child development, adolescent development, and then responding to problems that they have as, as, from counseling. So what we did was we went, again, as we had suggested we would do, go back to the drawing board, and we felt that at this time, the better way for us to solve this was to rely on a guidance counselor at the elementary level rather than a social worker. We felt that, given the, the nature of the request by the state to put together these guidance plans and the need for us to provide counseling, could better be provided by a guidance counselor rather than a social worker. A social worker cannot provide the guidance services that we would need, but a guidance counselor, if properly prepared, could in fact provide for the counseling service. So there is that overlap within the guidance profession that allows them to operate as a counselor, as well as somebody who can put together educational plans for students. So it would be my recommendation at this point that that, that is the direction in which the school district go, and when we do adopt the budget, that we include a guidance counselor for the elementary level. I don't know, Dr. Lee, if there's anything that you wanted to, to add?
I think you, you said that very well, Dr. Johnson. I think that while there is overlap and certainly additional PPS, mental health counseling services of any kind is necessary and welcomed, I think the school counselor, which is, guidance counselors are now called school counselors, although that's a term slow and coming, an additional school counselor will meet not only the state mandate, but be able to address the counseling needs as well.
I just want to say thank you for adding that in. I think it's a huge step for our elementary students, and I also think it's a, it's the right move for our school counselors in the middle school and the high school, who while we do want them to have a connection with the younger children that are coming their way, we don't want to be pulling them away from the caseloads of kids that they do have. This is a welcome addition, I think, for the district. I, I think our school counselors do a phenomenal job of really getting to know their caseload and their kids, and are sometimes the front line for identifying issues that maybe kids are having and helping to refer them to the right places to get them the help that they need. And in these types of times, I think this is a welcome addition, and I wanted to say thank you for adding it in.
Good. Thank you.
So we're, we're comfortable that a guidance counselor can almost have a dual function?
I think in what the state has asked a certified school counselor to do in its mandate, it's actually including the mental health concerns with the, you know, college and career readiness, attendance tracking. It certainly overlaps a lot of the, as Dr. Johnson said, the parallel issues of the mental health mandate. Okay? So yes, I do feel that the school counselor can address those concerns as well.
Look, the state has embarked on the, on solving an equity issue statewide by focusing on guidance for elementary students. They have felt strongly for a long time that many of the problems experienced by kids in the middle and, and high school begin in the elementary level, and that, that because children, particularly kids from low SES, socioeconomic backgrounds, do not have, have the same familial support that others may have in the middle class, that they want to make sure that the system provides them with opportunities to make a plan that replicates essentially the same set of plans for every other child, for every child in that school. So what they want to do is to make sure that as kids begin their career as students and as system, we are not doing anything at the elementary level, which sets one group of kids apart from another group and keeps them away from opportunities that might avail themselves to others of more privilege, as it were. So it really is a, an attempt at dealing with this issue of equity. And it really has to do with the whole concept of children who are emerging as graduates from our high schools now have to be prepared to be adult learners for the rest of their life, whether it be at college or elsewhere. They're going to change careers anywhere from four to six or seven times and need to be prepared to continue their learning well beyond high school. So the state recognizes that, and they want to make sure that everybody has equal access to whatever the credentials are that necessitates the, or enables them actually to develop all of the skills and content that they needed to continue that education. They feel that it begins at the elementary level, and that's why the emphasis on guidance has been as strong as it has been over the last few years, and the emphasis on developing these plans for these kids before they ever get into the middle school. So.
Is it? Go ahead.
Yeah.
So what will that look like, just moving forward one day in each building potentially, or we're not right sure yet? We're still working that out?
You know, I've got to tell you, the state continues to say it doesn't mandate that we hire anybody, but they want to plan for every, every child.
Right.
We're going to start with one, and we're very hopeful that that's what we will be able to do it. You know, we had a discussion about the possibility of having some of our middle school guidance counselors spend time with elementary children. I still think, from a contextual point of view, that's a very good idea, so they get to know the kids and the kids get to know them before they ever enter the middle school environment. This will only make it easier to do that and will facilitate that. And what these plans will ultimately look like, I think we're going to have to work on very carefully. It, I won't call it a logistical, it, look, it, there's going to be a limited amount of time that this person would be able to spend in each of the buildings, but it's more than what we have right now, and I think if we very clearly spell out what the goals will be for that person, we'll be able to accomplish those goals.
And I would just like to echo Mrs. Hackett. I think, thank you, because I think adding this is very beneficial for our students. So I'm happy to see the addition.
Are we thinking this is more administrative, or is this more counselor, or are we combining? Is it, or are we waiting for the state to sort of give us an idea?
We know what the state wants us to do. We had talked about them in previous meetings, you know, the four areas. This person, this, this additional counselor can be very hands-on. They're going to be there with the kids, and it's not a consultant, it's not someone who's in the background making, making plans or, you know, at a computer. It's going to be really someone who's really, maybe looking at the data, looking at absenteeism, looking at gaps, deficit areas, someone that suggests that they could help with the transition of students with disabilities from elementary to middle. I see a real role for the elementary counselor in doing that. I see a real partnership with this elementary counselor and the social workers and psychologists in the building for certain, and to a certain extent, of course, you know, principals and everyone else. But this is a hands-on position. This is not an administrator. This is a, this is a counselor.
Is it?
Yeah, you used the word combined. We would use that also. Yeah.
Is an elementary guidance counselor trained different than a middle or a high school guidance counselor?
No, it's one, it's one certification, K to 12. So it's really just what the, kind of on-the-job training. And as someone who experienced that formation, I'll say that we came in very prepared to be able to talk to kids with a third ear and a, you know, and have a third eyeball and that, that all, any good counselor would have, any good mental health professional would have. In addition, you know, we had certainly some coursework on college planning, but other than that, we learned about schedules and interacting with teachers and academic proficiency on the job. And so it's different in the middle school and the high school. But it's really critically important that our, our counselors know the whole system. So I'll echo what Dr. Johnson said, is we really do still think the idea of having the middle school counselors be able to get to know the younger kids, not a bad thing, as well as the high school counselors, you know, making sure that they know the middle school kids. And so I think an individual can concentrate on how we make that system work will help facilitate those relationships.
Anyone else?
Good. Okay.
John, there's one other item that has come up in a number of emails that have arrived on our desks during the week, which has to do with FLESS. And I, I think it appropriate that we at least bring that up since it is a budget item. And so what I really wanted to say was that, you know, FLESS is a vital part of what we provide. FLESS, by the way, for those of you may or may not know, is, is the foreign language at the elementary school. And essentially, what it is, is that we provide students an opportunity to be exposed to Spanish during the regular school day. What we have been looking at for a number of years is the, the effectiveness of the program that we have been providing, and many of our schools, not many of them, some of our schools are looking at it from about 30 minutes a day, three times a week, which provides us with about 90, 90 minutes in a 60-day, six-day cycle. What has happened this year is that we have been inundated with a number of other items that collide with the opportunities that our students have to be a part of a regular class. The, the number of times that kids either have somebody walking into the class or that the number of times that kids have got to be pulled out is staggering. Our principals have been on our doorstep a number of times and have said, we've got to take a look and reexamine what it is that we do during the regular school day. We took a look at, at the FLESS program and felt comfortable that we could continue to provide essentially the same valuable service that we have in the past and do it on a cycle in which kids would be seen twice a week for 40 minutes rather than three times a week, 30 minutes. So it would mean a change of about 10 minutes for, for each child in each building in a, in a six-day cycle. But we felt that we could, with some massaging of the curriculum, in fact, accomplish all of the goals that we had, that we had wanted to, without doing any serious damage to the overall efficacy of the program in preparing kids to become second language speakers by the time they leave, leave the high school here. All of that remains to be seen. We really need to examine it very carefully as we proceed. It did result in a savings to the school district of $50,000 because it meant that we could do that with a half-time less staff member. So I know that it has created a bit of a degree of consternation. We'd be very happy to talk about it. By the way, just so you know, and I, and I know if I, we, Dr. Pelletieri has in fact done a survey of school districts in Nassau County. I don't know, Chris, if you want to share the results of that, but we are very confident that the services that we provide in Rockville Center will continue to be and keep us way out in front of most of our neighbors.
Just a, a brief summary. We, we currently teach FLESS more than any other district in Nassau County that responded to the survey, and given the present scenario that Dr. Johnson just discussed in terms of twice for 40 minutes, we would continue to be the number one provider of FLESS in Nassau County, given that scenario.
Right.
I think part of the, I know, the, the tone and the questions of the emails that we had gotten or letters that we had gotten were, you know, expressing concern that this was the beginning of chopping the program down and continuing to chop it up. We know that this is a tough decision always to make when there's any reduction in any way. Having said that, we have consulted with the principals, correct, and, and teachers about the scheduling issue that we, has existed. And I think what, you know, what Liz had, Dion had mentioned last time was that we wanted to make a commitment to FLESS going forward, that it wasn't going to be something that we continually chopped up, and I, and that was what I heard from the letters. That's the concern I really hear. The 10 minutes is debatable. Some people obviously still want it, but I think people want to feel that, you know, even though we're the premier person in the district, you know, in, in the area, district in the area that has it, that even if we chop it up a lot more, we still could be, and that might, might just make the program be going away. And, and I know, I personally don't feel that way. I want us to be adding more to our programming, not less. So I think, you know, if we could find a way to audit how that 10-minute difference has affected or not affected the program over the next year, if this is the direction that we go, because I don't want us to say 10 minutes, 10 minutes, and it sounds like it's nothing, but then find out that we have actually, in some way, hurt the program because that is not the goal. The goal is to have a very good program in place that we've had and have our children have access to this type of enrichment.
It's an extremely important idea that you have, and I think that for the past several years, I'll say that I and, and Dr. Sampedino, who works in my office as the curriculum coordinator, we've met with the FLESS teachers two and three times a year, again, for, since I've been here. So a program started, I think, about 11 years ago, when, just as I was arriving, and I'm a great advocate of it. So I would continue that, that we would look forward, we would obviously look at curriculum now as we go forward and make this change, and we would look forward throughout the next year and continue to meet and make sure that we are meeting our goals of multilingualism for our students and, and making sure that they have real linguistic opportunities to prepare them for the middle school and the high school secondary language. So it would be personally important to me, and I know personally important to you as well, as we've had these conversations before and members of the board. So we would work to make sure that we are providing the best program that we can, given that time allotment.
You know, it's interesting, in part, getting back to the question that you raised, I've yet to meet a board member who has in any way suggested that the FLESS program is on the chopping block ever. I've, I don't know of any board member that I've worked with since its inception who has been willing to see it disappear. I mean, it is, it is, it does come up from time to time for discussion. There's no question about it, because it is something that we provide as an enrichment to students. But I can tell you, I'm blessed to work with a group of people in, in the central office and principals who are very, very supportive of it. Our goal is to see kids become somewhat, if, if completely multilingual by the time they finish high school, and this is one step in, in moving us in that direction. The board is committed to it, the administration is committed to it, the principals are committed to it. I know that every time you see something that looks like a red mark or a reduction, people think, oh, there it goes. There's step one out the window. Not true. If we reorganize, it does not necessarily mean that we are not any less committed to it, and we're not.
The decision to change from, you know, 3:30 to 2:40 wasn't, we didn't just decide that. The principals for years have been asking for that for scheduling reasons. It makes it difficult to schedule the day. More time is wasted with a 30-minute period because the school district runs, the elementaries run more in 40-minute cycles than 30-minute cycles. So this, this, this came about through much discussion on the level of the principal and with the board over years and years. So it wasn't just decided in a bubble, wasn't just decided this year. We've been talking about things for years to try and make it work better for the buildings and the kids in the school. And this through, through, for all we talked about, the 10 minutes, it's, it is 10 minutes. People are concerned, but the changing of the classes takes a lot of time, the pack-up and the unpack. So this was a way to accommodate the scheduling in school, a little more streamlined, and hopefully save that little bit of wasted time, you know, leaving and going into the program. So a combination of all, and that's how we came to this decision.
Yes, and, and while Dr. Johnson, I agree that, that we are very much in support of FLESS, and, and I think in, in all the years that I've sat here, we have been, it continues to come up. And I think one of the biggest issues that has always come up has been this 30 minutes versus 40 minutes. So I will reiterate what I said last meeting, which is I, I, I do not plan on seeing this at our next budget meeting for 2021.
2021.
Right? We, we won't be talking about this. We're going to like leave FLESS alone, and let's see how it develops, and, and we'll check back in with you, Dr. Pelletieri.
I'm going to write that down.
Please do.
Stay up. And it's being recorded, so thank you.
It's being recorded.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions on what Mr. Bartel's brought up today? Now we're looking for you for some other information.
So with that, adding that $100,000, we have the state aid to the revenue, we have to increase the budget by the $100,000, which would bring our proposed budget for next year to $120,235,899, which would be a 2.63% increase over the current year's budget. Our tax levy would be increasing by 2.65%, which is under the tax levy limit or under the tax cap. So we just need a simple majority to pass the budget.
What is the tax cap?
The tax cap is 2.66, so we're just, just under. Just under. Also, just to note, again, the impact on homeowners, the only information we have right now from the assessors' office for next year- right now from the assessors' office for next year is the preliminary assessment information, so changes, which are reducing the average home value by 4.6%. So as I stated in previous meetings, if your home is not declining by 4.6%, you're going to see probably a higher-than-average increase in the taxes. If you're, if you have grieved your taxes or grieved your assessments and get a reduction, you'll probably see a less-than-average increase in your taxes. So the projected, again, we don't have the final assessments, we don't have the final adjusted base proportions, which are all different pieces that go into determining exactly what the impact is on the taxes. So the average homeowner would see, at this point, about a 2.65% increase in their taxes.
This is almost funny and humorous, but if you call either the town of Hempstead or the county of Nassau and ask a question of either the assessors' office or the offices of taxation, they will send you back to the school district, to Mr. Bartels. We don't have the information to provide. It's not that we don't want to provide it to you, but remember, with the limited info, we don't have the aggregated total right now. So we cannot discuss with you or provide to you any real information on exactly what this is going to mean for the average homeowner in Rockville Center. And so until the assessors' office provides us with that information, we are still in the dark, just as you might be. So again, this is going to be one of those dances in which you try to call the county, you try to call the town, they're going to send you back to us, you call us, we send you to them. I mean, it's almost crazy. The origin of that information is in the assessors' office, however. That's where it resides. And then it goes from the assessors' office in Nassau County to the state assessors' office. The state then has to determine what they call the adjusted base proportion, which determines exactly how much of the tax levy is going to be assignable to Class 1, which is what all of our homes, for the most part, are in. And consequently, that will then determine it. That information does reside right now with the assessor, and we need to understand that. So we're not trying to evade the question, we just don't have the information, just the same way you as individual taxpayers don't have it about your own, about your own homes. So, go ahead.
That's it.
What? Oh, that's it? Okay.
So that's, those are the increases in the budget and the taxes that are required for the property tax report.
At this point, we'd like to open the mic to anybody who wants to speak to the proposed 2019-2020 school budget.
This mic.
What?
Make sure it goes to this mic.
I can't hear.
This mic.
Please step up to this mic and state your name and address before you speak. Yep, this one over here. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Erica Messier. I live at 493 Rose Lane, Rockville Center. I just had some questions about the reduction of the FLESS program. In doing some research on FLESS, specifically a FLESS program, the journal Perspectives on Policy and Practice, which is published by Brown University, in an article titled Establishing a High-Quality Foreign Language Program in Elementary Schools, recommends and states that both the National Foreign Language Standards and the ACTFL, which stands for the American Council for Teaching Foreign Language Performance Guidelines K-12, mandates or states that foreign language instruction should happen three to five times a week for 30 to 40 minutes per block in order to meet the goals of the national standards, which are proficiency in listening and speaking, appreciation for other cultures, and proficiency in reading and writing. It also suggests that foreign language instruction should be given the same status as a core subject, such as math or English. I wouldn't expect that the district would ever propose only having kids take math possibly one time in a five-day cycle. The present FLESS program that we have meets the minimum requirements that are set by the National Foreign Language Standards, which are three times a cycle for 30 minutes, actually less than that because we're a six-day cycle, not a five-day cycle. New scheduling would be significantly below those guidelines, that the students would only be meeting two times in a six-day cycle. I recognize that a cut of 10 minutes, of what seems like 10 minutes, doesn't seem consequential, but the lack of an entire block of instruction is concerning to me, especially when looking at what the standards for foreign language says show that this would not give us the potential for a high-quality foreign language program. And as an educator myself, I understand the importance of having high-quality programs. I'm also curious to know if this cut does go through, which it seems like it's going to, what is going to replace that third block of instruction? Whereas my daughter would, should be sitting in her third instructional cycle for FLESS, what will she be doing instead?
So I can jump in on that one. We spent 15 minutes before discussing guidance council at the elementary level. We have talked in this district about mental health and mental health mandates. We've talked about character education and social-emotional learning using Sanford-Harmony program. We each year add more and more to our teacher's plate, to our students' plate, to our principals' plate. And I am without a doubt certain that those things that we are adding here, guidance, mental health, Sanford-Harmony, social-emotional learning, character education, take up so much of that time that she will not be sitting there idly waiting for something else to take place. I'm confident that these pieces are going to fit very smoothly into that area there. And that is unfortunately part of why we have to make a change like this, because there are so many pressures on the district, on teachers' time throughout the day. And as a teacher, I'm sure you know, you feel those pressures as well, and the state. And personally, we add to it because we want to educate the whole child. We want to do so much for our students. And so we definitely want to keep FLESS there and continue to do it with as much as we can. And I assure you that we will look back at the program. And if we're not meeting our goals, then we'll come back to this Board of Education and say, we have to take a look at this. But we are not going to, that time is not going to go away or just be spent on kids sitting and doing something that's not going to be productive.
So it'll be dedicated, then, towards character education or?
It'll be dedicated to a portion, I'm sorry, I have a bad habit of cutting people off, so I'm going to catch myself and let you finish that statement. Go ahead.
Or I was going to suggest.
Excuse me, one second. It's not a block, it's 10 minutes. So that it's, you're looking at, it's not a block of 30 minutes that disappears.
It's that every other day now that's.
Just understand that now we're dealing with two periods of 40 minutes. So what is lost in a six-day cycle is 10 minutes, not 30. And I think there's been some misunderstanding about what this is going to look like, so that it is not a 30-minute loss and that that block of 30 minutes doesn't disappear. What it does is it reconfigures the day so that we now have two sessions of 40 minutes, and what's missing will be 10 minutes.
I understood that part. I meant just more, say she had FLESS on day one, three, and six. She no longer has it on day six because it's just on one and three for 40 minutes. What's going on in day six during that time that would have been spent? That's, I mean, the 10 minutes you can make up in a classroom here or there, that was just the question I had. Would there be any kind of a move towards replacing that block of time with STEAM programs that are maybe developed by teachers during staff development?
As Dr. Johnson said, there's still 10 minutes they're taking off the other two days that they have to make up, that 10 minutes. So it's not missing, there's not a free period of 30 minutes. So you're using up 10 more minutes on day one and three, so those 20 minutes combined with the extra 10 minutes that aren't scheduled, you know, those 20 minutes are already accounted for in other education, day-to-day education.
Yeah, and I will jump in and say, that's another great example of something that's come into education in the past few years, the Makerspace, the STEM projects, STEAM projects we like to have in Rockville Center. And that's something that I just sat with the Education Foundation and looked at over 20 grants requesting over $90,000 from the Education Foundation written by our teachers. And a great many of those were STEM and STEAM initiated, and those are types of things that would be in that place as well.
I just had one other quick question. At the last board meeting, there was mention of purchasing a sign for the South Side High School at a cost of $40,000. I was wondering in the budget, because I'm not very well-versed in budgets, I do understand that there's different types of budgets, where there's capital improvement budgets and then instructional budgets. The $40,000 from that sign, I assume, comes from the capital improvements budget. Is there any way to move monies from a capital budget into an instructional budget?
No.
No. Unfortunately, the items that are in the capital lines.
Not in New York State.
Yeah, not in New York. The budgets that are in the capital lines are outside the cap, so they're excluded from the cap. So if I were to remove that $40,000 from a capital line, I can't just place it into the general fund budget because my tax cap then goes down by that same amount.
That's what I assumed. And then, I guess, going along with that, for that $40,000, would there be consideration to allocate that perhaps towards one of the elementary school playgrounds that are falling apart or the status of the, some of the middle school classrooms with things growing in them?
We are looking at all of our elementary playgrounds right now. We do have plans, they were inspected recently by our insurance company. We do have plans to make repairs, to any repairs that are necessary to those playgrounds. However, we do recognize the need that, you know, extensive replacements need to be done on four of the five elementary playgrounds right now. So with the costs that are involved in doing those replacements, we don't, we're not sure we can replace a full playground at this point, based on some of the other projects that we have, but we are definitely looking at doing that in the near future.
Thank you.
What's the status of the sign?
Status of what?
The sign. Are we spending the $40,000 on the sign?
We have not made that decision.
We were supposed to get, like, pictures, right?
Right. And we all questioned that $40,000 last week, so we did question it.
No, I'm just wondering, because I know at other board meetings in the past, you've had the, I don't know what the term, the name of the class is, but where the students come in and they have their amazing woodworking projects. Can we, you know, put it out to have, and like, where is the sign going? I just, out here in front of the high school?
Front entrance, as you pull in.
That nobody sees except for, I just feel like $40,000, given what needs to be done from a capital improvement point of view, could be better spent elsewhere.
I think we all agree, after asking those questions, Les.
There isn't anybody that doesn't agree with you?
Yeah, yes.
And, you know, you talk about priorities, our first priority is the middle school walls.
Right.
The exterior walls.
And just from, I have spoken on FLESS in the past, and I appreciate everything that you're doing to maintain it into the program. And I agree with what Mrs. Dion had said, is please just leave it alone after this. I get tired, I mean, actually, next year is my child's last year in elementary, so I won't have to fight, but I've got nephews and other friends that have little ones here, and I just leave it alone.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. Anybody else on budget?
Hi, how are you? Kristin Cladfelter, I live on Locust Street in South Hempstead. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your time and your dedication to our children, and for the time that you took in preparing the pages of written material. I've done my best to try and go through them, even though it's a lot to absorb, and thank you for your time in considering my letter. I had some remarks planned for tonight that have kind of changed a little bit based on what I'm hearing. I just want to make sure that when I go back to my unit as the Culver PTA president, that I'm explaining to them properly what happened tonight. So, to, correct me if I'm wrong, so we feel confident that we can increase the amount of state aid that we're going to receive by $100,000, and that's going to allow us possibly to retain the TAs that we thought we were going to cut.
No.
No.
The two TAs at Watson, did I mishear you?
The $100,000 was to support an increase of one individual for elementary counseling.
Okay, I'm mixing up my two.
Right.
Okay. But so where did the money come from that we were going to increase the academic intervention or TAs?
We found, through some scheduling processes, we found that we were going to be down to teaching assistants at the high school.
Okay.
So that's, that's where the money's coming from, to fund either putting two teaching assistants back at Watson or making a half-time teacher a full-time teacher.
Okay. But in the context of uncovering that $100,000, we're not considering leaving FLESS alone the way that it is?
No.
No.
And in terms of this concept that we've been discussing, FLESS and the scheduling difficulties that it's causing for years, I know you remarked that there's a lot of people in the room that aren't normally here, but there's a lot of us that are normally here every single month. So I wonder if you could just sort of entertain me with when that issue got raised at curriculum meetings for the committee that meets, or when that got raised at the president's meetings? Because this is the first that I heard of it last week, that it's causing a scheduling issue that principals have been raising for years. I understood that we were discussing this as a budget issue, but we're discussing this as a curriculum challenge and a scheduling issue?
The principals have brought that up for, I'm going to say, for the past at least nine years. No, FLESS didn't went back how far?
I'm going to say, three years ago, it was sort of put to them, how is it going? And they expressed concern?
Concern.
Is that, I mean, what's, I don't know what the, there was some dissatisfaction. They were not happy with it. They said it was, and we were, and you weren't on the board, but we were shocked because we thought it was a great program and everything was smooth. And, and they said they were having issues scheduling and they were having several issues. So, and I'm going to say that was three budget years ago.
Yeah, remember, we were in the auditorium.
Yes. We were there. And then last.
I can remember the.
And then, yes, and then last year, we had a very lengthy conversation right here, a year ago, about this program, because there was more proposed cuts to it than what ended up coming about this year. And that was a very lengthy discussion with the principals at that point, and they still were adamant about how it didn't fit into the day, and they were reworking the day around the 30-minute cycle. So I know, just having been a PTA president and also a board member the last few years, that that conversation has come up in this room multiple times.
Okay.
And the decision to do that wasn't formed by the board. It forms at the principals' meeting, they meet once a month during, you know, during the whole year, but at budget time, they discuss the needs and the wants and the configuration of the school day for them, their specific needs in the school. And that is, that is something that they came up, they came up with the change and presented to the board.
Okay. So then, my question as a follow-up would be, since this is something that we've considered and discussed for a number of years in the context of making it as an academic change and not just as a budget change, what do I tell the parents in terms of what that impact is on that, that potential five-day lapse in a six-day cycle between the, like, clearly if we've talked about it for years, then this is not a question that we're dumping on you, that I assume you're prepared to discuss what the impact is, other than for me to say to them that we're still teaching it more than the 27% of other elementary schools in Nassau?
What does a five-day lapse mean? I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, I looked at a calendar. If there's a six-day cycle, then the children could go five days without a Spanish class. So our concern as parents is retention. If we want fluency and we want the high quality in the program, then I want to be prepared, when I go back to my unit, to explain to them what are considered.
She means because of a weekend. She means if you put a weekend in there, then there's going to be a possible five days.
They're going two times in a six-day cycle, so I don't know how you can figure.
Right, so some weeks, there could be five days in between their Spanish classes. So the point that was raised already is none of us would sit here and suggest that it would be wise to go five days in between a math class and expect there to be some retention where you can build on the subject. So I'm trying to be prepared, since this has undergone years of consideration, what I'm telling the parents in terms of how that's not going to impact retention and fluency.
We have dynamic teachers that I have been working with, as I said, for the past several years, and will continue to work with, to make sure that we are spiraling back when we need to, to reinforce what kids are learning as they move throughout the program. I'm confident, again, that with changes to curriculum and changes to approaches to teaching, that the kids will, again, meet our goals that we have for them in terms of the FLESS program.
Do we have any specifics, if this has been such a long time in coming, in terms of how we're going to change it?
It hasn't been a long time in coming, it's been a long time in discussion. So it's not something we reacted to just.
So it's not something we reacted to just now. They've been talking, it's been talked about over years of budget talk and never amounted to anything until it came to this year. So it's a discussion now. Dr. Pelletieri will work with the staff, will work with, you know, tweaking the curriculum. And that's how they'll address the, the change and the timing.
I think one of the things that Dr. Pelletieri brought up that's very important about timing is some of these state mandates. It's a very important point about what's changed just over these last couple of years. So I think if there was a conversation that's happened over these years where it was a scheduling issue, maybe they were able to still work around it. But as the state pushes down on some of the things that we need to work in, that we as a district feel are important, like SEL and like mental health and other things, I think this is the right timing. So it's not to say that we, you know, have been ignoring it all these years, but this was an opportune time to, to do something about it because of all of these other pressures. And I think you would agree, as a parent, that so many of these things are important for our children. We don't, we don't, we're not trying to rate them against each other, but the district hands, to some degree, get tied when we're being told what we need to incorporate in a day. So when they only have this time to this time in a day, you know, unless we suggest making the day longer, we end up being a little pressed. And when a scheduling issue's been brought to our attention, this is the opportune time to say, this is maybe where we need to make that change. And again, not to devalue the program in any way. That's not, that's nobody's intention or goal. So I think that that was just a good point that needs reiterating.
Hi. My name is Nathan Stangy. I live at 436 Laurel Road. I'm involved with a group here in Rockville Center called the Anti-Racism Project. I have to admit, I'm really confused about this planned reduction of FLESS since Dr. Pelletieri was just quoted in a March 21st Herald article touting the FLESS program. The article covered a forum at Malloy about making school curricula more inclusive of diverse perspectives and cultures. It was in line with a framework recently released by the New York State DOE called culturally responsive sustaining education. It was in that context that Dr. Pelletieri expressed pride in the FLESS program specifically and said, quote, "Rockville Center Public Schools is working each and every day to be more culturally responsive in order to meet our entire school community needs." And, quote, "Culturally responsive education is something we take very seriously and is a core value of our excellence and equity for all approach. I heartily support those goals and sentiments. So I was really glad to see them, but then equally shocked to so quickly hear that the district is planning to reduce FLESS in the wake of that article." In the article, Dr. Pelletieri also noted that the district is examining reading materials to ensure, quote, "Those represented in the books and stories we read and discuss represent our diverse student body. I'm hopeful that the results of that examination will be made public. To me, the value of FLESS isn't just teaching a foreign language, but also cultural exposure. I think having a truly inclusive educational landscape for all of our children in our district is an issue of great importance. To me, the district's reduction of FLESS makes me question the level of commitment to that concept. I'm curious if FLESS teachers were involved in the conversations about changing the curriculum?"
So let me just start by saying, I appreciate you read the Herald and you got my quotes, yes. And they did exactly right. And I meant every one of those words. And I know this, this board does as well. And I expressed pride in this program a month ago. I express pride in this program tonight. And I will express pride in this program tomorrow and next year as well. Because it, it means that much to us and, as part of this family and this community. So, yes, we did discuss with FLESS teachers. I just met with them last week, as a matter of fact, as I do and as I stated throughout the year. And it's not something that I'm happy to meet with them about or that they're happy to hear. But it is something that I know, due to their professionalism, that we will continue to grow together and make sure that we have a program that is amongst the highest in Nassau County.
You mentioned that you were confident that the teachers will be able to adapt and to meet the goals that are set. Can you describe what those goals are specifically?
Certainly, certainly. To better prepare our students linguistically for secondary education. Someone actually got up, Ms. Messier got up tonight and talked about some standards. And those are standards that I feel are important as well. Prepare our kids for secondary Spanish and foreign language, whether it's Spanish or French. We actually have more kids taking French next year than we've had in other years prior. And I think that speaks volumes to the FLESS program as well because the kids feel they are so immersed in language, they want to try another language. So I think that's incredible. And I want to make sure that, another goal is the, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting right now. The culture. Making sure that we expose kids to a culture that is maybe different from theirs and respect and responsibility. And I know the program that you represent and representing, having been to many culturally responsive professional developments and bringing people in to look at our curriculum writing and look at, making sure our language and our literacy and our ELA program is culturally responsive is really important to me and important to this district.
So are there, are there measurable metrics attached to those goals?
So I get asked this all the time on the other side. When people say we should maybe not have a FLESS program because we are in trouble. And then when I try to defend it, they say, what are the measures and the metrics for it? And it's, it's more qualitative than quantitative. Kids love FLESS. And they go home and talk with their parents and they help their older brothers and sisters who maybe didn't have FLESS at that time with their, their Spanish. We don't have it as homework. We don't have formal assessments. We don't put it on a report card. That's actually something we may think about doing as we look at a new report card, as the standards change in ELA and math in the coming years. It's hard to quantify. Our kids do really well in the middle school and foreign language. They do really well in the high school in foreign language. I don't want people to use that fact to say, well, then, we don't need FLESS. So I'm always wary about that. But it's certainly more qualitative than quantitative.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm also, you know, dubious of kind of overtesting our children and, you know, having to educate them to those metrics. I'm just curious if, if the program in the new formulation is not able to meet those qualitative standards, can the board commit to going back to three times per cycle tonight?
Yeah. Oh, I'm not going to speak for the board, but I know that if we are struggling, the board will hear it. This community is not shy about letting this board know, or me, what's happening in their schools with their kids. And I'm sure we will hear it, and then we'll have to, we'll talk to the board. And as for the other part of this gentleman's question, you guys will have to answer that.
I would be very interested in revisiting it and being on top of it and knowing, like I said that earlier, and ask Dr. Pelletieri that exact question. So I think that's a part of our responsibility, is to never make a decision and totally walk away from something and put a blinder on and say, we made that decision. We have to live with it. You know, we always have to reevaluate everything that we're doing. And I think that that's what we would commit to do, absolutely 100%. Would we commit to bringing it back? Or, we can't say that yet. But I, but I can commit to saying that we would want to know those measures and, and make sure that we have made a good decision.
We will also ask for a report from Dr. Pelletieri on how the program's going. We don't look at things and just dismiss them. We want to see what, you know, what, what effect it had. If, you know, if he presents that it's definitely a drastic negative effect, we will consider options for next year. But this board, the way it sits, I think, in unity, wants to leave the FLESS program alone unless they come back and say it's not working that well, and then we'll revisit increasing. But I don't, I don't believe we will touch it next year.
Unless we need to.
Unless we need to go-
In the positive. In the positive.
Right, in the positive.
In the positive.
So if the feedback is negative on the changes, the bias would be towards going back to what was currently being done versus eliminating the program altogether?
We'd have to find a new way, though.
We will be open for that discussion, without a doubt.
Okay. I was also curious about a couple of specific line items in the budget. And I apologize, I am one of the new faces here tonight. The, on page nine, the curriculum administration, that went from 150, 150,000 in the 1819 budget to 455,000, 472, a 203% increase?
Page nine?
Page nine, I can give you the-
Do the 40, which?
Was it, the line item is A 2010 dot 155, 10, 9,000?
What document is it? Does it have one to 40, 40 pages?
Uh, yeah, the 40 page.
Okay.
The simple answer is, is, yeah, you haven't been here.
No, fair enough.
We've been through a couple of discussions. There have been a lot of changes in how we've had to code our budgets this year due to the state changing some requirements and calling it transparency. So we have to code a lot more specifically to buildings. And those individuals who are not assigned to buildings kind of get moved to different codes. So that's kind of what's happened. There are some administrators that were in some of the 2110 so-called budget codes that got moved here because everybody within 2110 has to be assigned to a particular building.
Gotcha. Okay, that, that does make sense. Thank you.
Kind of move there.
What about on page four? Item A 1620, 164, 10, 9,000? Summer workers temporary?
Yep.
Going from 90,000 to 225,000, 150% increase?
Yeah, again, those, those student workers, we have a number of student workers. Some were included in that budget code. There were a number of others that were in the 2110, 164 budget code.
So if I, if I were to pull an old ver, copy of last year's budget, it would be in-
Or the current, the current budget and go to 2110, 140, you'll see a large reduction in that line.
Okay. But not under the description of summer workers temporary?
Should say...
Substitutes?
No, no, 140.
No, 164.
It went to 164.
No.
Right, no, 2110, 164.
You look at that second, that second set of digits?
You'll see a reduction of 100,000.
Okay, so 2110, 164, is it still called summer workers temporary, or?
That one is called, well, it's, you know, it's got a different line. It's called salaries non-certified additional.
Salaries non-certified additional. I guess I'm just curious with the, I mean, with the categorization in the current budget of summer workers temporary, if that's an area that's perhaps growing more strongly than it should? Or is it, it's literally just being moved from other lines? It's not a true growth?
It's really basically the same cost, just being moved from other lines combined.
Gotcha.
There were, there are several that do that. For example, if you look at the overall 1620 budget code, I think there's a $1.2 million increase or something, a very large increase. We had to move all of our security staff. All those expenses had to go from, again, 2110 budget codes. We had a lot of this in 2110, moved to 1620.
Okay. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I apologize for taking up so much of your time. The administrator salary on page 26, going from 265,000 to 495,000? A 2250, 155, 10, 0034?
Say it again, 2250?
2250, 155, 10, 0034, page 26.
It's, again, a movement of certain administrators out of other codes into this particular code.
Out of the 2110?
Right.
Okay. And then, there was also, and I hope there's an explanation on this, the elementary FLESS program is actually going from 465,000 in the 1819 budget to $0 in the 1920 budget?
Again, that's, that's an individual budget code. They got reassigned to the individual buildings.
To the schools. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
You're welcome to come in and take a look at any of this or call us if you would like and go over this in some detail. It's, it's, it's been a, a real problem this year because the, the state has essentially dictated how we're supposed to move people into buildings and then take building, people who used to be assigned to buildings and move them out.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I'm not a CPA by any stretch of the imagination. So I understand the challenges that you must face. I just, you know, again, I know our students are, are very disappointed with the, with the change at Covert. So, you know, again, I'm hoping to be able to explain this to my son. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Burge, 15 Hendrickson Avenue. I just wanted to thank you all and let you know that last night we had this Spanish Honor Society induction ceremony at high school. It was French and Spanish Honor Society. I don't know the exact number, but I feel like there were 80 kids from 11th grade, thereabout. It was phenomenal. It's great to see that our foreign language program is working well. And I just, I wanted to know the history of it a little bit because I've forgotten. I feel like my 11th graders started FLESS in like, fourth grade. Maybe third, I'm not sure. But I feel like every few years, we've added to our FLESS program and have, have made it younger and younger and more, more in the elementary schools. Fantastic.
It did. The program worked backwards, started in fifth?
It started in first. No.
No, didn't it?
No, it started upper.
Mark is here.
No.
Mark!
Mark.
It started upper?
Call him, Mark.
Oh, in first, okay.
Started first, then went first, second, then first, second, third.
Purposely built it back.
Right. We went up.
So they're-
And the current seniors are the first year-
First, yes, that's what it is.
That we had FLESS. So your junior-
Right, had it every year.
Had it every year, right, right.
First grade. And that's where it's been since then. It started there.
It, it started, it was, was it orig, it was a little bit more than the three days at 30 minutes. And we did a cut about three, four years into it, didn't we? Mr. Mason, do you remember that? You don't remember. You don't remember that?
I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
I remember some, some cut three, four years into it. I remember some, some cut three, four years into it during, when tax...
Were we at like 3 at 40 minutes or something like? Were we 3 at 40 or 45 then?
We might have been, yeah.
And then went to 30?
But anyway, that's the history.
Right, okay. Well, it's impressive and last night was impressive and our kids do a great job and thank you for supporting them. And she wants a minor in Spanish in college. We're doing a great job. It's a great program. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jen Gilchrist-Fuentes, 184 Lakeview. Just have a couple of questions as we talk about qualitative versus the quantitative data. If there is, and I am not a proponent of standardized test-taking, but if there is no portfolio or anything that we are measuring the students by, it seems to me that this decision is being solely determined by not data versus brown, or we all know frequency is a factor for language acquisition, but it seems to me that this is being based on principal input, which is subjective versus anything objective like a student portfolio or quantitative data. Is this true? It's the principal's decision that's driving this?
I can't speak to, the genesis for this was budget discussions that we've had for the past several years. And the principals have come to us and talked about scheduling and issues around that. So we did have certainly principal input on it. We purposely did not build in assessment, homeworks, report card, and the idea again around that was just have fun in learning a language. Let's be a little bit different than the pressures around some of the other things that we do, that we do assess each time. And so we've talked about it throughout the years. We talked about putting on report cards. We've talked about adding an assessment at the end of 5th grade to inform decisions and placements at 6th grade. And we did a little piece, some writing pieces and things like that, and we felt again, let's just allow the kids to enjoy their time in FLESS and learn FLESS without even realizing that they're learning another language and another culture. And we've been very proud of that. And that will continue, obviously. But we don't have a portfolio. Again, in meeting with my FLESS teachers last week, they, one of the suggestion was let's start to put it on the report card. Let's start to perhaps substantiate it a bit more so that people recognize it as a real value. Again, I've always felt that value and I think members of the board and the community have felt that value as well, but maybe it is time to do something like that. And we are putting a report card committee together because again, as you probably know, the ELA and math standards are changing once again in New York, so we are going to have to change the report card. And that's a conversation that we'll have with the FLESS teachers.
Thank you. That is a huge concern, especially moving forward, the fact that there is no objectivity to determining this important program. We're all saying we value it and yet we have nothing qualitative or quantitative to measure its success by, to, so that we could measure what is the difference of the children's performance in three times a week versus twice a week. So that's a concern for me. My other question is, we talk about the high level quality of a FLESS program. How many districts, I didn't have the time to do the research, but I'm just wondering, more districts are going full immersion, half a day Spanish, half a day English. Does anyone have the data on districts that are doing that?
So I have one district in Mineola that has their dual language program. That's the only one that I have.
In Nassau County?
Yeah.
There's only one in Nassau County?
In Nassau County, okay. Because I know that it's increasing across the state. I'm just not, I don't have the numbers on it. It's just something that popped into my head today. So I guess I'd just like to make a personal...
Excuse me one second. I can tell you that that grew up at exactly the same time that the new regulations on dealing with ENL kids emerged as a requirement in the school districts as a solution to that problem. So what they do is they, they call them dual language programs and it meets the state requirements for providing services to ENL kids. So just understand, the communities in which you're going to find them alive and thriving are communities with significantly large ENL populations.
Okay.
That's been my experience, except Mineola, Mineola may be somewhat of an exception to that, but that's my understanding of where that whole concept grew from and is developing statewide. But there's only one that I'm aware of in Nassau County and that's in Mineola.
Thank you.
I could offer one other more quantitative type piece of data and that would be that I'll speak with our middle school 6th grade teachers in particular at the end of the year in follow-up for the next couple of years, actually, because I will be reporting back to the board and we'll get their feedback, as we always did. We'll get their feedback again and we'll look and see if there's real declination in student ability in that middle school. And then that's when we'll have to do something. You know, we want to prevent that, obviously, but if we see that that's happening, that's another resource that I have.
Okay. And that's, I guess even that, and that is fantastic and I would like to see that, but my concern is that's still subjective. Should that teacher retire and then someone else comes in, that subjectivity is a factor when we have nothing, no real account of measurability, just moving forward. And, and I agree, I am a therapist in a school setting and conflict, scheduling conflict is a challenge. But the fact is, all data shows that frequency is a factor, so this is instantly a loss, even if you say it's just 10 minutes. I disagree personally and professionally and say that obviously that session, as someone mentioned, is a huge factor. And so I guess if we can just go on record as saying, there are people in the community, I know we have the emails that say, this does feel like a decision based on conflict instead of quality of service. And when we talk about high quality of our education that we're offering the kids, it feels like this came down to a scheduling conflict. And our staff is, as you said, very dynamic, our administrators are dynamic, and this should be something they can factor in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on budget?
Pauline Gibney, Long Beach Road Rockville Center. I just had a quick question on the budget information. On page 13, it's a small question, really. If you look at each of the elementary schools, you list a line item for foreign language, and Riverside isn't reflected? Is that because they're combined with another school?
That's, that's in the, just the staffing piece, the handout of staffing?
No.
Is this one?
On page, I'm sorry, page 13.
Page 13.
Each of the elementary schools?
Oh, the full budget.
Have breakdowns?
Yes.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, we tried to address that at one of the previous board meetings. I'm not sure if those, the salary detail handouts where we just did the budgets?
Oh, it's in a footnote.
It was a handout because we had that exact issue come up.
But they're getting FLESS.
Yeah, there's, every building has it. Again, it goes back to this transparency, the way we hit budgeted, we did it kind of in two steps. We wanted to make sure we got everybody in the budget and then we were doing the actual staffing members for each building. So there should be a salary detail report which shows how many full-time equivalent staff members would be assigned for each building. So you would see whether there's a .5 person assigned or a .33 person assigned to Riverside as compared to maybe Covert and Penn Whos.
So if you compare for each one of the schools that has a breakdown, really they're getting, even though they might not have?
Yeah, if you don't see it in the budget.
That account code?
Correct.
It's being picked up somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, yeah, it's on that.
All the elementaries are getting the same amount of FLESS.
Okay.
There's no building that doesn't have something. So if you see somebody missing, it's in one of the other codes.
Gotcha.
So there's another report that tried to break that out.
Is this report on the, online?
Yes.
The pages?
Yeah, so it's, I don't know what you, what did you call it?
It's an 11-page report. It's a salary detail only.
Okay.
And it's listed.
Proposed staffing budget plan. And when you go down on that page, for instance, where you go and it says like music zero?
Right.
It's being picked up somewhere else?
You'll see in these final two columns, when you get it and look at the final two columns, the first one is 1920 budgeted and then 1920 adjusted. So you'll go down, you'll see the zeros, which is why there's no money in that code, but then you'll see the adjusted, the actual number of people assigned to the building.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
Good evening. Mark Mason, Laurel Road, Rockville Center. I said a year ago that it would, I would really like for someone to find a reason to get me up and off the couch. Reading the Herald this past week did just that. I'm here to talk about FLESS, something that I was very vocal about during my time serving on this board, and just a couple of items. My fear is that eroding FLESS further continually makes it easier for it to be dropped entirely. Because it's 10% right now, it could be another 10% in a year, no matter, irrespective of what you feel now. That's, that's this board. And we always say, we only can talk for this board. It's another decrease and pretty soon it may be off the map entirely because it's too easy. There's not enough being gathered from it. Chris, you said, kids are having fun in class, learning at FLESS. 100% correct. So there's a learning to that as well. There's a learning component to that as well. As someone said, it's cultural as well. It is. There are, there was an article in Newsday from the beginning of this school year. Just want to correct a couple of things that, it's Newsday, so right, wrong, who knows? In Hericks, they also have multilingual elementary school learning going on. And it's not necessarily that it's a Spanish population. Most of Hericks has a very heavily Asian population. But in Hericks, math and science are taught entirely in ink in Spanish at the elementary level, as well as in social studies at the middle school. We're not going to have that. Not at this, what we are presently on track to do. And the program also extends into the high school in Hericks. I thought I heard this evening, and I wasn't quite sure, so I wanted to ask.
I should say.
Dr. Johnson, you said that it's our hope that students are fluent in Spanish by the end, by the time that they graduate. Those goalposts have changed. Originally, it was those students are fluent in Spanish by the time they enter high school because that would enable them to consider taking a third language. I didn't hear anything about third language today. It was supposed to be at the beginning of high school, not that they're fluent in Spanish at the end of high school. This is going to, this is just something else that sets in stone. We have to lead these kids to achieve the best they can, as well as they can, when they can. And that has been the hallmark of this district since I've been here for almost 40 years. The extra block, Chris, you feel that there's plenty of additional learning that can get done in that extra block of time if that 10, if those 10 minutes are realized from the FLESS program. I'd like that to be monitored because I feel that, that programming of those extra blocks requires much more scheduling than is being done right now for the FLESS program, as well as, oh, let's just teach 10 more minutes of math. Let's just give it an extra 10 more minutes of ELA. That's the easiest thing that principals will tell their teachers to do. We need to go in the direction that is going to advance the learning of our kids. More districts on Long Island are adding to their foreign language in elementary school learning for kids than are reducing time. And this week's, this past week's Herald, it went, one of our board members was talking about, I believe it was Teacher AIDS, but gave this quote, "I would rather see us build up the foundation around it and put some resources into something that makes this successful, instead of kind of pulling and patching." The same can be applied to the FLESS program that we're considering here this evening. So I ask you to go back, because I don't think this is a question of the $50,000. This is a question of, do we want to continue FLESS and, you know, personally expand it? That's my personal preference. It has been from the beginning. Or shrink it to the point where it becomes too enticing just to take it away. So thank you for your time. It's good seeing you all.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Anyone else on budget? All right. We have to take a roll call vote at this point?
We do.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept a proposed budget for the 2019-2020 school year to be presented to the voters of the Rockville Center Union Free School District on May 21st, 2019, in the amount of $120,235,899?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? I mean, how do we, roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Do, can I have a motion to adopt the property tax report card?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? This is not roll call, Jackie, right?
Yes.
Oh, it is. Okay, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. So we approved unanimously. All right. What was that?
Yeah.
Well, were unanimous as?
It's 4-0.
Okay. Trustee Sue McDulte, actually Secretary of the Board, Sue McDulte is out on work-related function, so she was unable to attend tonight. Dr. Johnson, we are in code of conduct hearing? Or is that Dr. Lady?
Yes, we shift gears right now. And again, we come back to one of the state regulations. Just keep in mind that on a regular basis, we visit and revisit the code of conduct, but annually we are supposed to provide to the community an opportunity to speak to the code of conduct as it exists, and that is what's taking place tonight. So this is not where we are asking that the board adopt it, but that the community have an opportunity to review it, address it, ask questions, and similar to what we just did with this hearing, it really is an opportunity for them to speak, come to the microphone and speak to the issues, if there are any.
So we, all right, I'd like to open the mic to visitors pertaining to the code of conduct.
Oh, wait, should we talk about it first?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
Actually, I'd like to hear what kind of changes were there, Dr. Lady.
So as Dr. Johnson said, this is reviewed annually. And what we do is we get a committee together of administrators, teachers, parents, and students to take a look at the code of conduct at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, one big committee. And we assign sections for everyone to pull apart in detail, and we meet a couple of times to make the suggested changes. So in this year's review, what we did is basically update language to bring it up to current either technology standards or to reflect changes in, for example, our security. So there is references to where students can exit and enter a building. There's references to showing ID when they enter a building for visitors, and that's obviously reflective of the changes in security that we've made. There's changes in references to technology. We had some words in here like nanos and other old technology. Now we make sure we have Apple Watches and smartphones and iPads and so forth. So the current technology is reflected as well. There were some changes in CPS regulations, who can interview children, when they can interview them, what the rights of the children are, and what administrators, how administrators have to cooperate with CPS. So there were some substantive changes in that. And there are some references to the anti-bullying, both the DAS regulation in, the DAS regulation and the cyberbullying regulation. So there's updates there. That's the bulk of the changes here. We also looked at, we borrowed some language from the middle school code of conduct that we saw some relevance at the elementary schools. So we added a piece from the middle school in regard to behaviors in the classroom, fire drills, care of property, bicycles, and bus behavior. So they were made, that was just basically borrowed from the middle school. And then finally, just logistical changes like where we had a retirement of an assistant principal and Kodak in the high school. We replaced it with the new high school Kodak. Miss Stokery's name was replaced with Mr. Moss. And of course, new principal at Wilson School was reflected in Mr. Duffy's appointment as principal there.
I had a couple of questions. One of them is on page, let me just see which page it was. It was page 29, and it's about the student searches and interrogations. Kind of towards the bottom, it talks about that an authorized school official may conduct a search for a student's belongings. And I just wanted to, some clarification on who exactly an authorized school official is? Is it any staff member? Or does it have to be one of the people kind of mentioned in the paragraph earlier, like a school nurse, a security official, a superintendent, or et cetera?
So the paragraph above it says that the board authorizes the superintendent, district, and building administrators, the school nurse, and security officials, and the presence of an administrator to conduct searches. So that's sort of defined in that paragraph, who the...
It says, but they would be able to do it if the authorized school official has reasonable, they keep using that terms. I'm just curious.
Right, I think they're referring to that. Those people are the authorized school officials to conduct the searches.
Okay, okay. Two other things. We mentioned that disorderly conduct can include obstructing vehicular traffic. And I'm just wondering if we've ever considered putting in any language in here about using vehicles appropriately on campus? You know, here we have students driving, and if there's ever been any issue with the way students are driving, or if they're texting and driving on campus, or unruly driving sort of thing, that we include that somewhere would be, I think, beneficial?
We had not discussed it, but it's certainly worth considering.
And then lastly...
And where, where is that?
Oh, I saw on page 11, Dr. Lady, at the top. It's conduct that's disorderly, and then it talks about obstructing traffic. And then overall, I mean, I really noticed that there's kind of like, in the entire document, there's a peppering of appropriate use of technology and, you know, misuse of electronic media and everything like that. But I wanted to see if we could get some more clarity in here about the use of social media and appropriately that might happen off school grounds and out of school hours. Because I know we talk about things that happen off school if they affect students while they're in school, but I think we've seen an uptick of people using social media at younger ages and possibly having... social media at younger ages and possibly having issues with that, so I want, I think we should maybe put some clarified language in there about how students are responsible to use that, really all the time, obviously, but that they could be held responsible at school if, you know, if it were to be forwarded, or...
So, there is general language in here about the code of conduct referring to behavior that happens at school property, at school functions, or when the action disrupts the educational process, and that's sort of where we catch the, anything that happens outside of school that enters school by some kind of nexus. In particular, with social media, is there a page that you were looking at?
No, like I said, I kind of found it lots of little places, but I feel that we should make that language maybe strong, stronger, and make sure that students are aware that they are being held accountable for that use all the time.
On page 31, we talk about visitors to the school, and that a visitor has to sign in at the security desk, but we don't mention that they need to show ID. And I think, since we're now asking everybody to do that, bottom of page 31, we might want to just put that in there, just... And then, on page 43, which is the code of conduct for the middle school, we talk about lockers, and we say that the lockers are the property of Rockville Center School District and are subject to inspection with just cause, but in the high school, there's, we say they have no reasonable expectation of privacy in lockers. So, do we need just cause in the middle school?
No, it's the same standard, which is reasonable suspicion.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, I will reiterate my issue with our dress code in the middle school. Last year, we changed the dress code in, in the high school to sort of be more gender neutral, and I personally think the dress code in the middle school is not gender neutral, and should be, like, look a little bit, so, high school dress code is 10, middle school's 41.
So you, are you suggesting we just make it the same, high school, middle school?
Well, I would...
What we did on page 10 was, was more gender neutral, that's what we did last year.
That's what we did last year, yes. Would I like to see it the same?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So, why can't we? Why can't we ask for that? I guess we'll learn.
I think we are asking for it.
We'll learn next week.
I think we are.
We'll find out why.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll open the, Noreen, do you have anything to add?
No, that's it.
Or you'll just take it back?
That's it, Mr. Sh...
Would anybody from the public like to come to the mic and speak specifically to the code of conduct? Nobody come to the mic? Okay, Dr. Johnson, opportunity for superintendent?
Just one thing, actually, two. One, I want to thank the Board of Education. First of all, Mr. Bartels, for all the work that he has put in on helping us and coordinating the development of this budget, and thank the board again. I know there is always some dispute about some items and some issues with regard to what it is that we are supporting in one year and the next, but I, I think what this budget truly reflects is the commitment of this Board of Education to the, the whole child in this school district. There is no question in my mind that, from the beginning to the end of this discussion, there has never been a scintilla of an attempt by any member of the board to eradicate from this school district any program that we have. We are always faced with tough decisions, and they're from time to time. We are looking at reorganizing some of the ways that we present services, and there are a number of things that we've had to examine and look at this year to do it either more efficiently or to change the model, for a variety of different reasons, but at no time do I ever believe that we are looking to eliminate or, or move away from the wonderful commitment that this board has made to the integrity of our educational system and the services that they have provided. So, again, a word of thanks to the board for their commitment to our children and to, in fact, having this budget reflect that commitment to these kids in our school district. So, thank you very much. Next on my agenda is the play. Went to see it over this past weekend here at Southside High School. I, I've got to tell you, I was a little bit skeptical because I didn't know much about it. It was a 1991 play, that, that, The Secret Garden. Whoever heard of it? And then, all of a sudden, you get in there and you take a look at the talent that these kids have, and the music, and it was just an incredible experience to live through. And I really want to thank the kids for their commitment, the time that they put into it, and you really begin to understand what a kid production, you know, I sometimes, you, parents don't always have that opportunity, I do, to, to kind of walk through the halls up and down while the play is underway, just to see what's going on in either the rooms, and to see how many other kids behind the scenes, just not the actors on the stage, but how many kids are involved in this. And the stage direction, the director, who's a teacher in the school, is standing out in the audience. There are kids who are running this thing, and it is just amazing to see how much enjoyment these kids get out of it, how much they put into it, and at the end of the day, how much we as a community can, can enjoy the product that these kids put on for us. So, my thanks to everybody that was involved in it, and again, going back to where I started, it's all part of that commitment, and I think that we have to the children of this community, and the budget which reflects that thinking and that plan. So, thank you to the high school, thank you to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mrs. Barry?
Actually, The Secret Garden was the first Broadway experience I had at 12 years old, so I did attend it in 1991. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend this weekend because I was away, but I have no doubt it was Broadway quality, as I've seen the productions in the past. So, congratulations to all of the students on their hard work, both on stage and behind. It's tremendous amount of hours that they put in, and I'm sure it was fabulous, so I was sad to miss it. Thank you to the Ed Foundation for a wonderful event, I was able to attend this past weekend. It was wonderful to be able to highlight some of the great things that the Ed Foundation is able to do in conjunction with the district for our students, and to celebrate some of our staff members and community members as well, so thank you for that. Thank you to Ms. McCormick and Mrs. Boylan for all your hard work with the Coalition, and Dr. Leahy, it's really such an important part of what we do, and Ed's such a great resource, and for our community members. Let's see, what else do I have? Oh, I was able to attend Dr. Dewey's presentation, I forgot to make mention of it at the last meeting, and it was really, really moving, and very important for our students to be there, as well as our parents, so thank you for bringing that, him as well. I think it was a really important message for our community, at this time and always a good reminder, so thank you. And what else? Thank you to the administration, tough choices, it's my first budget experience on the board, so I will commit to always being reflective, as with fellow board members and administration. As Dr. Johnson said, we all are on the same page in terms of just wanting the best for all of our students, holistically K-12, so that they're as productive as they can be when they leave us. So, it's something that we will continue to have discussions about and be mindful of moving forward, and thank you for all of your input, it's important as well. Happy Passover and Happy Easter to all of you celebrating, and I hope all of our students and parents and families have a nice, restful, and safe break. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Mrs. Dionne?
Kelly said everything.
Did I?
She said everything.
Perfect at all.
You really did.
Fabulous. But I did see Secret Garden, and it was fabulous, and, and what I'm always struck by when I see the plays is, I've watched many classes graduate, and you see these enormously talented kids, and you say, what are we going to do? They're leaving, they're gone, we're, we're bereft, like, we have nothing, and then you go to another musical, and you go, oh my God, they're amazing. So, I'm sure it'll be showing, everybody should see it. So, Kelly, I'm not going to just sit here and say everything she said. Thank you to everyone, thank you to everybody who came and spoke, and emailed throughout this entire process. We read everything you send, we listen to everything you say, and we hear it, and it means a lot. So, even if you don't get what you want, that doesn't mean we're not listening or we don't care what you say, sometimes we're going to have to agree we don't agree. So, as far as lobbying, I, I really want to reiterate that I thank the Coalition for all their work, their lobbying does a lot, and did a lot, and I think we need to continue to lobby against marijuana being legal. For years and years, we have been talking about getting voting out of our school buildings from when, before I was on the board, and we all received an email saying that we're inviting us to go lobby up in Albany to get, to move elections out of schools. Do I think that's going to happen anytime soon? No, but I think we'll just continue to fight. I think it's really important, when we talk about security, and then three times a year we just open the doors and anybody can come in, so I think it's truly important to continue to talk about it. And everybody, I hope everybody has a wonderful Passover and Easter, and a good break.
Yes, it's very hard to stay original when you go down the line. Yes, I wish everybody a happy break, happy Easter, and Passover. I would like to echo the sentiments of gratitude towards Dr. Palter, Dr. Leahy, Dr. Bart, Mr. Bartels, Dr. Johnson, of course Jackie, our number one girl. We have really toiled over so many decisions, and we, you know, probably make them crazy with the questions that we ask and email in, and, you know, backing up of information we try to get for parents and for community members, so a lot goes into it. People think that we, this is where we spend so much of our time on the board, but it's really so much more than what you see here, you know, really trying to make sure we make good decisions. I'm personally very excited about the elementary school counselor being added in. Again, I just want to echo that, how important I think it is in this day and age to have access to a counselor. I agree with the state mandate on that, I know it imposes pressure on us to, to work that into a ready tight budget, but as an elementary school parent, and seeing the, trends that are pushing down into our younger children, I sometimes are terrifying as a parent, and I, and I really do feel that they're very important, and our counselors in this district are just phenomenal people, they really do have their finger on the pulse with our kids, they work very hard to get to know the kids, and I appreciate having that person reaching down to our younger learners, our younger kids, as, as everything starts to just become more real as, as they're in elementary school. So, thank you very much for that. Kelly and I and Susan had our first middle school orientation experience, which was a little terrifying also, but, but wonderful, and really excited for our kids to go on to the next step. I thought Mrs. McGinn did just a fabulous job, really, so I wanted to say thank you to her and her staff. They just do such a great job of making the fifth graders feel welcome, all of them visited in that week as well, so parents and students alike, those transitions are so important. I know we do the same when our students come here as well, so just wanted to say thank you for that, and that's it.
I have nothing else to say but happy Easter and happy Passover. We will open the mics to visitors. Please state your name and address before you address the board.
I'm Frank Van Sant, President of Rockville Center Teachers Association. I live in Huntington, but I feel like I live in Rockville Center. This is a town where caring about children is deep, heartfelt, and powerfully expressed and backed, and we teachers are happy to be a professional arm, so to speak, in this process of caring. We educate, and we love what we do, and this has been a tough year, but your teachers are resilient at a time of year when donations of food are lesser than at other times. Rockville Center Teachers Association united in pride to donate hundreds of pounds of food goods to Long Island Cares. Your teachers, time and again, show their love for the kids and the wider community. I'm proud, and I'm humbled to be a part of Rockville Center Schools and a part of Rockville Center Teachers Association. Thank you.
Jeff Schwartz, 470 Laurel Road. This was not a conspiracy from Laurel Road, by the way, I guess we're just representing this one. I'm here with, representing, and with several parents from the Southside High School varsity baseball team. I'm going to try to keep this pretty brief because it's past my bedtime, to be honest with you guys, but Erin O'Sullivan, one of our parents, sent an email about a week ago regarding the lack of a assistant coach on our varsity baseball team, and ironically, just a couple hours after she sent that email, one of our varsity players was actually injured. So, we talked about the devotion to our children and how we have talented children here, and we do, we have talented actors, singers, we also have talented athletes, as everybody knows, and safety is a huge issue, and the lack of an assistant coach on our varsity team is a huge safety issue for us. So we're bringing this to you, to your attention, because we're asking your help, and to help us get an assistant varsity coach.
Can I address that? Yeah. Thank you very much for coming to the microphone. Thank you, Erin, always sitting in the back, for sending us that email. You know, we can't fix what we don't know is broke, so until sometimes things like this don't, they surface, we're really unaware that they are a, a problem, maybe we should have been more attentive to it. I, I don't think I can fix it this season, but I can tell you that, having looked at all of the assistant coaches that are assigned, we're going to go back and revisit the entire complexion of our sports programs in the school district. It has kind of brought to my attention, and the attention of the board, who's raised the very same question as I did, you know, how are these people assigned, and what do they do, and who's working where, under what conditions? So, I, I don't know where we're going to go, but I would, I would, we will certainly involve you as the, as the year progresses with whatever the decision might be according, as we move forward, but that was in last year's budget, and so we, we're, we're there right now. I'm not even sure how logistically we'll be able to get a new coach in there at this late, this late into the season, or this far into the season, but we will take a look at it and certainly consider it for next year, no question about it.
We are beginning the season, so there is still time to, to make some change. We would appreciate it.
Dr. Johnson, as, as a, you know, as a concern of the safety factor, I, I know in most sports, there are supervisors on the field that are paid employees of the district, and they do accompany someone who gets hurt in an ambulance, or make sure they stay with them. Can we check to see that the baseball team is supplied with the supervisor?
You said somebody was injured, what happened?
He was, a young man was hit in the mouth with a baseball during warmups.
Okay, and, did he have to leave at that point? And if so, who accompanied him?
He did eventually, but he didn't leave right away, but he did, one of his parents came and got him.
Oh, okay. Yeah, see, we, we, we look at our supervisors, I mean, look, they're, safety is, is, is really critical, and even though there may not be an assistant coach, we're supposed to have supervisors at, at each of those, and I'm not sure how many are there for baseball.
There's usually, there's usually one, right?
There's one?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be at practice, though? Was it practice he got hurt?
No, it was at a game.
No, no, only at the, not at practice.
Only at the games, the supervisors are assigned to it, so.
And they practice, you practice down at the river?
At Barish.
Yeah, Barish. And there, there is the single coach with, only the, the one coach with all the kids.
And also, right, and also our, our student athletes are a first base coach, which presents another safety issue for the ball, anything like that.
that we're safety issue for the ball, anything like that.
Student athletes are what? Excuse me?
The first base coaches.
Oh, okay.
So players act as first and third base coaches?
First base coaches.
First base coaches.
And there's no coach in the dugout.
Are we just the third base coach? Okay.
If the head coach is the coach of third base, there's no coach in the dugout.
There's nobody in the dugout.
We are recording this, so can we please keep the comments to the mic so everybody can hear? And it helps us, you know, keep a little order to the meeting, so.
All right, look, it's never over till it's over. We appreciate the fact... Anybody raise their hand who's here for baseball? Oh my goodness, holy smokes. Good thing we didn't have a game tonight. All right? Oh, okay. All right, okay.
No one got hurt.
And no one got hurt, okay. All right, well, listen, we really appreciate you coming, and...
You wait, you come up. We're not shutting the mic down, so don't worry.
So we'll be back in touch very shortly. All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, Kristen Kelleher, Dartmouth Street. My question is regards to the baseball. Why do other teams from on the varsity level have multiple coaches, and baseball has only assigned one coach for the year?
At this, at this point in time, I can just say that it's been a tradition in this school district. That's the way in which the configuration has fallen out. We're looking for a more in-depth explanation across the board as to why and how assistant coaches are assigned. That's all I can tell you at this point. I'm doing it as we speak. So it's not something we're leaving out.
Is there anything that we can do during practice so that there's another adult there in case there is a problem? Because right now, there's only one coach there during practice, and it's all the way at Barish. So if something were to happen, I guess, you know, I'm not sure what, how, yeah, I don't know.
There may be, I have to look into that. There is a possibility that we can do something about that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
On any topic? Doesn't have to be, it could be anything.
Baseball parents are very patient.
No kidding.
Thank you, all right. Yes, they are.
Those games are long.
Sat here a long time, right.
All right. We will... You look like you want to say something, Dr. Johnson.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I shouldn't have asked any questions. Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Items for action. Can I have a motion to approve items for action A through, B, C, D, A through E?
And the addendum.
And the addendum.
And the addendum.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for discussion of specific negotiation and litigation matters?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everyone.